We will resume the special city commission meeting. It is now twelve forty-five.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're going to have three more presenter in front of you today. And then we will take a break after the last presentation. And then a procurement official would like to mention something real quick.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mr. President, Commissioners, City Administrator. Just a general comment. You know, part of today's meeting is for us. Part of today's meeting is us asking the commission to make a decision by selecting their top three firms. And in doing so, I mean, I think it's very important that the commission have all the information that they need to select a top three. And I'm just asking if the commission desires to do so for those commissioners who had questions that were not fully answered by the firm due to the time constraints. That if prior to the evaluation, the final selection process, if the commission desires to do so, to allow those firms to answer those commissioners' questions that were not fully answered.
And that's consistent with the process? Just don't want to breach anything. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. And I think the Director Ferriol also had something she wanted to say before we resumed.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to ask if Commissioner Shoff can ask her question again, just for the record. And then I have a response to her question.
Okay, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Before the break, I was just inquiring as to the last presenter, Flagler Realty, on the summary sheet that you provided. The date for completion was March twenty-twenty-six. And looking at their backup, their completion date seemed to indicate a twenty-twenty-four date.
Sure.
So I just wanted to see if there was a typo in accuracy.
Sure. So as it relates to the actual, we reviewed the documentation provided by the developer. And they have a construction completion of March twenty-twenty-fourth. However, they do indicate, in addition to, they indicate full occupancy of March twenty-twenty-six. So I believe that was a discrepancy that was there. But one thing I want to add, and I want to mention for the commissioners to consider, is that project timelines are all subject to various considerations. One of them being the various governmental approvals that are going to be needed. Actual, when the construction takes place, any potential material delays. Just keep that in mind, that we are not bound by the specific timeline that is provided in these proposals.
And I assume as we negotiate the terms of the deal, we'll get more specific with timing and
That is correct.
marks and that type of thing.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Sorry, to that point, Jennifer, I just wanted to ask, because some of the timelines, that is one of the questions I've had, is that some of them are as early as next year, or twenty-twenty-three. And some of them are as late as November twenty-twenty-six. And so I understand that that can't all be because of permitting, whatever. Some of the things maybe will be the same for all, but some of them are due to other factors. So are you telling us that when you negotiate, you will be asking them all to have the same timeline?
Or? We won't negotiate a project timeline as a part of those discussions. Also keeping in mind, when the developers may have put a different start date, right? They may have assumed that this process would have concluded at this time. So that could impact their timelines. And that's why it's proposed. We'll have more specific in terms of project timelines once we're negotiating and when we bring those term sheets forward to you for your consideration.
And presumably, if the commissioners wanted it, if the commission as a body wanted it done by a date certain that would try to be folded into those negotiations? So we could give direction as a body to staff as they are negotiating?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions before we begin? Okay.
All right. I'm going to present you the Gilbain Development.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mr. President of the Commissioners, Commissioners. My name is Anna Rodriguez, and I am here on behalf of Gilbain Development to present to your project, the Palm South. I am also joined by our chairman and founder, Mr. Robert Gilbain today, as well as our Vice President, Development Director, Multifamily, Mr. Chandler Aiden, who are also going to help me hear in this presentation. We are all local here. We're all residents of Palm Beach County. I myself live in the city about ten minutes away from the site. So I'm very, very familiar with the area we'll be discussing today. First, when we started analyzing the housing market of West Palm Beach, we realized that as far as the employment trends, the city has very strong fundamentals for job growth, for population growth. We all know that COVID has also helped accelerate this. However, we also noticed that the city has a housing supply and demand imbalance. We see that there are not enough housing units that are being built to satisfy the growing demand, that growing housing demand, which in turn causes rents and prices to increase. I actually experienced this myself when I moved to the city about three months ago. And I had a very hard time finding a one-bedroom apartment for rent. All the landlords that I would talk to, they would tell me, you know, sorry, it was rented. Sorry, it was rented. I had to visit like ten different units to be able to find my place to live. So I felt this myself. This is what led us to basically come up with a programming for our project. We have a low-rise, three-story development that we carefully designed this to be able to fit within the surrounding community. We don't see any, you know, high-rises and even mid-rise buildings around in the south ends, which is why we decided to focus our project to look like a low-rise building, of course, satisfying the housing needs that I just mentioned. As far as the programming itself, here we can see the site plan, which shows six different buildings positioned towards the exterior of the site. We have focused the parking towards the interior and the back of the site. We have two-hundred-and-ten residential units. This would be four rent apartments. And specifically, out of these two-hundred-and-ten units, we have twenty-one workforce housing units. These twenty-one workforce housing units will be at a hundred percent AMI. We understand that, yeah, we understand that the definition of workforce housing for the city goes up to a hundred and fifty percent AMI. So technically, a hundred percent of our units would be at a hundred, you know, actually, a hundred and twenty percent AMI rents. But the minimum commitment we're making is for ten percent of these units being at a hundred percent AMI. We also have eleven thousand square feet of retail fronting South Dixie Highway. We know that retailers like to maintain street presence, which is why we've decided to keep the ground floor retail along South Dixie Highway. The remaining of the apartments would be located in these four buildings that we can see here behind the site. We also have as far as the residential amenities, a clubhouse and recreation center, a pool, a dog park. And then as far as the public amenities, they're mostly focused along the C-51 canal. We have a series of different dogs on the waterfront. One would be for outdoor dining. We also have fishing dogs, kayak launching dogs, paddleboard rental shop here towards, located in this section of the site plan. We've also decided to place the entrances to the development off Gregory Road. We know that was a big concern the city had to alleviate traffic. We've decided that's the strategic move that we want to make. And yes, we also propose to activate the different edges of the site, meaning Gregory Road and along the waterfront, with different locally commissioned artists coming to do different artwork pieces to, you know, create, help enhance the sense of place that we're trying to create with our project. This would be a view along the, along South Dixie Highway. We see the ground floor retail. We also see the gateway entrance signed to West Palm Beach that we've placed here in the corner. This specifically, I'm an architect myself, so I pay attention to these little details. But the facade is an undulating facade. The architects came up with this concept based on, they want the waterfront, you know, to feel like it's different waves. So they've taken it also along this facade of South Dixie Highway. We also have a lit-up trellis to enhance, it's a different architecture feature. And we've also paid attention to the lighting placed on the facades, also highlighting the different entrance points. As we can see here, this is where we, this would be the main pedestrian entrance. As I mentioned, we don't have a vehicular entrance of Dixie Highway. This would be the pedestrian entrance to the site. So this is the entrance that I was mentioning.
Good afternoon. I will talk to you about a few of the key elements and community benefits of our development. First and foremost, I'd say the project's being developed in one phase. The construction duration is anticipated at sixteen months. So we won't disrupt the neighbors for an extended amount of time. We intend on fast-tracking the design during the entitlements process to try to bring the asset to market as soon as possible for leasing. We include, as Daniella said, ten percent workforce housing at a hundred percent of AMI, which, you know, I think it would be disingenuous to say that, you know, if we're presenting workforce housing at a hundred and fifty percent or a hundred and forty percent, a hundred and twenty percent of AMI is true for workforce housing. It is not. It's market rate rents at that price. We, like we said, we're fitting this in with a three-story, low-rise building that we feel fits the scale of the neighborhood. You know, the expansion of the Blue Way Trail and having kayak and paddleboard dock launches and a rental facility at the end of the, at the west end of the facility for the public to use as well. We are pursuing local restaurants and retailers for the retail space. We feel it's important to communicate with the surrounding neighbors and the local community to find out what they feel their need is. So we intend on doing that. And we are granting donations to local organizations, which we'll cover here in a few minutes. Once again, this is just a rendering of the active waterfront. You're looking at the restaurant in the southeast corner. If you're coming over the highway here, you see the City of West Palm backlit sign. You know, that's a stab at, you know, what we thought might kind of fit in with the Norton Museum. And, you know, obviously, all that is up for negotiation at a later time. As far as the economics of the project and what's being provided, we're anticipating between a hundred and seventy-five hundred and two hundred temporary jobs, mainly due to construction. A minimum of eighteen percent SBE and fifteen percent NWBE participation with a goal to achieve more. We will create seventy permanent jobs. And hopefully, we can reach out to the local community and provide those opportunities to the folks in the surrounding neighborhood. The utilization of the City of West Palm Beach consultants and contractors. We have Schmidt Nichols Land Planning onboard, Brown and Phillips Surveying, the Mosaic Group, Simmons and White, PTC Transportation Consultants and CAS Construction, who are all local to West Palm Beach. Upon reaching stabilization, the project is expected to generate more than five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes above and beyond what it's generating now. We are not requesting any economic assistance from the City of West Palm Beach whatsoever. The members of our team are all Palm Beach County residents, and the woman's here today. And Daniella, as she said, lives in the City of West Palm Beach. And I'm a former resident of City of West Palm Beach. Benefiting the community, we intend on providing a hundred-thousand-dollar grant to the Inner City Youth Golfers Fund and First Tee of the Palm Beaches, another hundred-thousand dollars for apprenticeships and job training to the Urban League of Palm Beach County, and a hundred-thousand dollars to the West Palm Beach Public Park System, specifically the South Olive Park, which is located very close to this site. The key terms to the financial side of this project, well, we look to purchase the property at eight-point-four million dollars upon certificate of occupancy. During construction and entitlements, we will lease the property at five percent of the sale value, which in turn is roughly about four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. Contribute to local organizations, as I just stated, for three-hundred-thousand dollars. Ten percent workforce housing, which is about, a hundred percent of AMI is about three-hundred dollars less per month per unit on average. That is the equivalent of about two million dollars of equivalent value if we cap it at five percent. And once again, the property taxes increase by five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. Bob, if you want to talk about?
And Gilbain is, has six offices in Florida. We have about four-hundred people in Florida working. And we have three-thousand people overall. This is our hundred-and-fifty-first year in business. We do about seven-and-a-half billion a year. We work throughout the United States and internationally as well. We have no conditions for financing. We have lenders that have already underwritten the project. We will provide the equity ourselves or bring in an equity partner if appropriate, but we have no conditions on financing. We think it's a very strong market. We think you've done an incredible job in creating a wonderful business atmosphere here where people want to come and live in West Palm Beach. We want to be part of that. And we do not require a joint venture partner. We have the expertise in-house. We develop thousands of units of affordable housing. We've got over two-thousand units of workforce housing underway. We're doing a major project with Amazon in Maryland. We've got over eighteen-hundred units in New York City and over two-thousand units in Austin, Texas. So I call Palm Beach County my home, as do my brothers and cousins. So we'd like to find other opportunities to invest and be part, a long-term part of this community. Thank you.
These are just a few of the projects, sample projects we've done over recent years.
I would add, we've done a lot of waterfront development. The project down at the far right is in Channel, Arizona. We had seventy-two acres, around seven water canals, a mile from the largest ship plant in the world. The project successfully completed, won a number of awards. Top left is in Narragansett, Rhode Island. We bought the entire downtown, twenty-six acres from the town, redeveloped that. So demonstrated experience, we've done about seventeen-thousand residential units. One of the things we learned as developer, public-private partnerships, we've done forty-three P-three projects, is the ability to listen and communicate. People have told us that they do not want a project that's built in multiple stages. It has to be financed differently. They want it built out at one point, at one time, where it can generate jobs. It can generate not, jobs, not dreams, and create economic opportunity for people. We're prepared to partner with the city and with the greater community to accomplish those goals. Thank you.
Why Gilbain? You know, we make an immediate impact to the City of West Palm Beach market rate and workforce housing needs. We think that the city has grown tremendously. I've seen it over the years as a, I'm sure every other proposer here has. You know, we do feel that there is a major need for housing. I think that's the highest and best use for this project. And it would be great to provide further workforce housing, more of it for this particular property if given the opportunity. You know, we think our project fits the scale of the neighborhood. If you look at the surrounding houses, they just, none of them are over two stories, three stories tall. We're providing approximately eleven million dollars of economic benefits to the city, along with another five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in taxes annually. Project will be built in one phase, and we have the financial strength, experience. No JV required. We're ready to go, and we will hit the ground running. Thank you.
Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Okay, very good. We'll go right into the questions from the day is then. President Paduzzi, you want to start off?
Thank you, Mayor. And I may have missed it in one of the other illustrations, but can you talk about parking on-site? Maybe I missed it. I apologize.
Sure. Let me get back to it here for you. Yes.
So it's all surface parking?
It's a surface park project with all the parking, you know, not accessible from Dixie Highway, located behind the retail and residential buildings on Dixie. Both entrances and exits are located off Gregory Road, which Gregory Road will also be improved for parallel parking, public art, and landscaping.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. You know, one of the things that I appreciate about this process is that instead of an RFP where we specifically said, this is exactly what we need to see here, we open it up for an ITN so that the developers could tell us, hey, this is what the market is looking for right now, as well as the community. So I'm interested if you could share with me a little bit about your decision-making process for including the restaurant there.
Sure. We've contacted several restaurateurs in the area, some of the local citizens through just public outreach as well. And we feel that the southern end of West Palm Beach is underserved regarding restaurants. We think, you know, we think this location can handle probably two restaurants without an issue. Part of the process would be to reach out to the local community and find out, you know, what type of restaurant they're looking for, what type of atmosphere, what price point. I mean, I think we can all agree that there's enough restaurants serving fifty-dollar plates. So, you know, the idea here would be to try to incentivize the local neighborhood to tell us what they want.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate the idea of you giving back to the community in terms of giving money to the youth, inner-city golfers. I think we've all, really, one of the highlights of the golf course for us is that we are being able to bring golf to every zip code in our city. But I wonder, beyond that, do you have any ideas for how you might connect this property with the golf course? Or any synergy with the golf course within your property?
Well, I think I can answer that as a poor golfer. Our family is friends with Seth Woa, know a lot of the people on the PGA Commission, and are very excited about the development that they're doing here. We think the workforce housing in particular can be a big plus. And, you know, we don't want to develop housing for people who'll just play golf one round, stay here one night, and then move on. We want to build and help build the community. We think having potentially, if you have two-hundred-and-ten units, you'll have five-hundred, five-hundred-and-fifty people living here. Hopefully, both the youth and the older people will be encouraged to play golf. It is a tremendous feather in your cap that you delivered that golf course. So we're very excited about it. It filled in a big hole. We want to fill in the other big hole.
We also would contemplate utilizing one of the retail components for golf club rentals, for, you know, anything that could benefit the youth on the golf course itself. And we've provided connectivity to the golf course as well. So that's all open. We're open for negotiation on those items as well.
Commissioner Warren?
Hi. This is the item that I feel warrants far more attention than it typically receives as it relates to development projects. I'd like to know how you plan to gauge your success as it relates to community benefits and inclusion.
Go ahead, Henry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. Are you speaking specifically to the SBE and MBE outreach? So the first thing is starting early. Making sure we do the outreach early to let them know what the opportunities are for the project. Making sure that there, we're working with the city's small business department, that we're identifying all the vendors that are available. But in addition to that, we want to, and this will also help the city's department, reach out to trades and other companies that may not be certified with the city, but they are a business within the city. So we'll provide that additional outreach to them to make them aware of not just the project, but the city's SBE, MBE certification programs and get them in the fold. And then we'll track it. We'll measure it. So we'll work with CAS Construction, and Chandler can speak more to that on the tracking.
In addition, I think part of the problem for folks that are small business, minority, or women-owned businesses in the construction field, you know, it's very difficult on projects if the scale of the project becomes too large for them to be able to sign a contract agreeing to the terms of that general contractor. Number one, I think the scale of this project is to the size that it would actually be the most benefit to the SBE, WBE, MBE. In addition, I think we would break down the scopes of work to a point that we could even have second-tier subcontractors under the subcontractors of CAS Construction. You know, if you're a HVAC contractor and all you do is duck work and you're a minority business enterprise, small business enterprise, you might just pick up that portion of the work for the HVAC contractor. Coming from a recovering contractor myself.
Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Some of the notes I had from your presentation pertaining to MWBE were your union partnerships and your summer internship program. So covered that category for me. I wanted to inquire a little bit further on community engagement beyond the construction phase. So you're looking at creating some permanent jobs, but also, this is a public-private partnership, looking at, you know, kind of amenities and what types of retail uses. So how, what is your plan to engage the community going forward for those types of activities?
I'll answer first, Henry, and then you can answer. You know, generally speaking, I think, once again, it's important to identify the programming for the project early on, identify what types of retail we're going to have in the project. You know, and then essentially try to reach out to the local community, whether that's through newspaper, social media, online advertisements, you know, to inform them of what's being built there. In addition to that, is to hold a job fair, I would say, a couple months before certificate of occupancy with the employers, or the, yeah, the employers, the retail tenants who intend on occupying that space to advertise jobs as well in conjunction with us. And then obviously, the management company who actually manages the apartment complex itself should offer jobs to the local folks around the area.
Yeah, I just want to add to that. We do realize that the community, West Palm Beach as a whole, is very diverse. But especially the south end is extremely diverse. So we want to make sure that all of our outreach and communication is also reaching all communities. So utilizing our grassroots efforts, our ground team, to really go into the community. So, you know, we'll have various meetings throughout every phase of the project. We'll have a project website. We'll have all forms of communications. And of course, all communications will be translated in language. So that way, we're reaching, again, everyone in the community.
I think part of the biggest issue there as well is tracking it and truly tracking it, following up and seeing what kind of communication we've had, week by week, bi-monthly, whatever the case may be. If you don't track it, it doesn't happen.
Question I have is related to your response. You're right, the south end is extremely diverse and with a large Hispanic-Latinx community. And the question I have is how will you ensure that this project itself, even after it's completed, is welcoming and inviting to those communities in addition to the majority of community?
First off, I think, you know, once again, informing them of the project, making them aware of it. In addition, making the price points affordable for people, you know, the retail tenants, making sure that we are signing leases with folks, knowing what their business model is and knowing what their, what their client looks like, and steering them in the direction of letting, informing them of who their clientele in the local area will be.
I think too, going back to what Chandler said earlier, is hearing from the community. And I think really listening to the community early on and hearing what their preferences are, what their needs are, how to best communicate and reach them is going to be very, very important in this process. And so taking that information and then making sure we implement what they said, what we heard. So, and that's going to allow us to make sure whatever's developed long-term has met their needs based on what we heard.
I think just something I may add. So I myself, I'm from Ecuador. And if I would have had the opportunity of living close to, you know, a Latin American restaurant, that would have been my preference. As I mentioned, I had a hard time finding a place to live. If I could find an apartment close to a Latin American restaurant, that would be gold for me.
Okay. Thank you. Forty-six seconds, Mr. President. You want to try to ask a question?
Just really quick, I see that you have waterfront activation, but I see that there's also residential buildings right there. What will the public access be to the waterfront?
Public access will go all the way down the waterway. That'll be, you know, the residence buildings will be set back. That'll all be designed for the distance setback requirements, but that'll be a wide path for the public. You know, and then the docks, like I said, down at the very far west end, it will be public rentals for paddleboards, kayaks. rentals for paddleboards, kayaks. We've talked to different operators of those types of businesses as well, so the whole thing will be active.
Our projects tend to be extremely well landscaped, and we use local artists on multiple projects to really get the feedback from the community.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next firm will be Hyperion Development. Is this one? There's a clock twenty-five, so when it's ten minutes, we'll stop, and then we'll be question and answer, so make sure you look at that time.
Thanks. Just down here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President of the Commission and Commissioners. Hyperion Development Group feels privileged to be invited here today to make its presentation and to be part of the short list of six that are presenting on this great project and great opportunity for the developer and for West Palm Beach. I'm Robert Vexler, I'm the President and CEO of Hyperion Group. With me today is my colleague and our Head of Investments, Acquisitions, Jordan Thaler. Hyperion was founded in, sorry, one second, I have to do two things at once. Hyperion was founded in 2002. We're a South Florida-based development firm with two large-scale projects totaling almost thousand residential units under development in Palm Beach County, including one right here in West Palm Beach that is on track to break ground next quarter. Our core competence is impactful, transformative, mixed-use development. We have a team of highly experienced and skilled professionals who occupy positions at the highest levels at premier development firms. Prior to my relaunching Hyperion in early 2020, I served for six years as President of Residential Development, Head of Acquisitions, and Member of the Investment Committee at Silverstein Properties, a global firm based in New York City that has developed over forty million square feet. Larry Silverstein is, of course, most known for rebuilding the World Trade Center towers and revitalizing downtown Manhattan in the years after nine eleven. And it was a privilege to work closely with Larry those years. At Silverstein, among other things, I personally oversaw development of the eighty-two-story Four Seasons Hotel and residences downtown, and was involved in over five billion dollars of development and acquisitions. Hyperion's key principles have worked, Hyperion's key principles have worked together for many years, and a team is made up of substantially of Silverstein-related personnel, such as Jordan, as well as other personnel, including our Head of Development. Our would-be President of the Blue Way Park Project developed Four Seasons Orlando at Disney World, and was a key member of the World Trade Center Development Team. I relaunched Hyperion last year with Larry as investor, and with Hyperion's first development right here in West Palm Beach. We are developing a four-hundred-and-fifty-seven-unit rental building on South Australian, and we have plans to provide workforce housing. Also critical to Hyperion is its strategic partnership with Winter Properties, a related company of Standard Industries, an industrial company which has over nine billion dollars of annual revenues, and an investor with over four-and-a-half billion dollars in assets under management. The Hyperion Winter Platform can execute financially on any size project, and currently has three projects under development, two in Palm Beach County and Blue Way would be, I'm sorry, three under development, two in Palm Beach County, Blue Way Park would be its fourth. Our large-scale execution capability is further enhanced by our ability to attract significant institutional capital. This was demonstrated here in West Palm Beach with Starwood Capital entering our South Australian project as an investor. Starwood, as you know, is a hundred-billion-dollar institutional investor. Also rounding out our team, our design partner, NEAD, is one of the premier architecture and design firms with a global presence. They are globally renowned with offices in New York and Shanghai, and a regional presence in Miami for its Florida-based design work. We are also proud to continue our partnership with Cast Construction. Apart from being one of Florida's most prolific general contracting firms and based in West Palm Beach, Cast prides itself on being a member of the community, which we will further describe. Cast is our contractor and our current West Palm Beach project at South Australian, and we are collaborating on other projects in Palm Beach County and in Miami. Despite how much I think of our capabilities, there are no doubt several qualified, very well-qualified developers here today, and they are presenting credible proposals. We believe, however, that our plan stands alone in offering much more than just residences. We believe in the transformative nature of the golf course project and see it as a catalyst to enable not only programming of a hotel and an open space with a reimagined waterfront, but also as a means to reach out and provide opportunity and exposure for the underserved communities in West Palm Beach, including the local community. This will, of course, be for golf, but also through our planned tech incubator, which we are setting aside in our office space, there will be opportunities for internship, apprenticeship, and mentorship, and to discover and encourage entrepreneurs. Our plan includes over two-hundred-and-nine residences, thirty-five thousand square feet of retail, hotel, and twenty-three thousand square feet of office. We expect that the development will spur further development in the southern end of West Palm Beach, generating new jobs and tax revenue benefiting the city, local communities, and its citizens. The residences are at the heart of our mixed-use program and will include all the amenities and services tenants have come to expect from new multi-valley buildings in Palm Beach County. The entire development will be supported by two multi-level parking garages, as well as street parking that will have spaces for seven hundred and fifty cars, with dedicated spaces set aside for residential tenants and workers within the office and retail spaces. Within the residential program, our rents are projected to be a discount to downtown West Palm Beach. We have provided for a commitment for five percent workforce housing. It should be noted that with current AMI levels, another twenty percent of our residences will be priced at approximately one hundred and ten percent of today's AMI, so that there is actually a larger percentage of apartments attainable to the local workforce and community. As I touched on earlier, within the office buildings, Hyperion would envision a three-thousand-square-foot space dedicated to assisting early-stage startups in the technology space. The space can create opportunities for collaboration, mentorship, and investment for entrepreneurs and investors in the West Palm Beach area. The tech incubator will be a hub for networking summits, events, and activities centered around tech ideas, investments, and economic trends, which will in turn bolster occupancy for the hotel and related retail and food and beverage providers. With proper focus and participation from business leaders in the West Palm Beach area, Blue Way has the potential to establish West Palm Beach as a credible venue for tech ventures. Blue Way Park is one of only two presenters that is planning a hotel. We believe the golf course will attract local participation, but also visitors from other parts of Florida and the U.S. The hotel is adjacent to the golf course and along the canal waterfront will welcome these visitors, as well as those drawn in connection with the commercial activity in the offices. The hotel will be six stories of rooms above one floor of retail, as well as amenity and lobby space overlooking a new public park and waterfront promenade. Within the hotel guests and business travelers can balance their days with networking on the terrace and hotel meeting rooms, recreation time on the golf course and water, and experience the retail destinations along the waterfront promenade. Blue Way Park will have substantial retail located mainly on the ground floor of the eastern and southern two-story buildings, as well as on the ground floors of both the residential and hotel structures. We envision the retailers to the east and south will have a focus on restaurants with outdoor dining, taking advantage of the canal waterfront and pedestrian-friendly interior streets. We will work with local businesses to bring art galleries and antique shops to the retail space, ensuring a continuation and elevation of the already-established Antiques Row, the well-known collection of shops nearby. Open space is also an integral factor in making Blue Way Park a desirable mixed-use community that is informed by the standards of new urbanism. Hyperion has included forty-two thousand square feet of dedicated green space in the Blue Way Square and Boardwalk. In addition, there will be pedestrian-friendly, low-speed level streets within the development. The canal waterfront will serve residential and office tenants, as well as hotel and retail patrons alike. Along the boardwalk, a small launch will be built for the water activity enthusiasts to go out on the water with paddleboards, canoes, or kayaks. Blue Way Square and Boardwalk will be the unifying central element to the entire Blue Way Park development. The square will provide areas for civic engagement with areas to the full, with access to the full range of mixed-use programs. At the heart of Blue Way Square will be cultural programming that may include music performance and dance to provide an enriched pedestrian retail experience. The square and boardwalk will offer water-edge experiences, including outdoor dining and other community-related activities. We felt that Blue Way Park will be a transformational new nexus for West Palm Beach, and accordingly, the development's entrance should form a welcoming gateway that draws people in. Central to our commitment to create a welcoming face to the rest of West Palm Beach, our community, is our dedication to working with the Art in Public Places Program to design a beautiful artistic sign for Blue Way Park. Hyperion will work with local artists and the community to plan a welcome sign that is impactful and memorable for visitors and locals alike. I'd like to introduce again Jordan Thaler, who's going to talk a little bit about communication.
Our contractor, Cast, has also committed to their small business participation plan, committing to exceeding the SBE and MWBE participation goals of the project, twenty percent SBE and fifteen percent MWBE. Cast will increase the awareness of construction procurement opportunities for local companies and development and implement an effective SBE, MWBE outreach program. Approximately two hundred-plus construction jobs will be created by the project, the majority of which will be local. Hyperion is also committed to work with the local community to ensure the jobs being created by the project, both temporary construction and permanent, will go towards local community members and citizens of West Palm Beach, as well as to create impactful internship and apprenticeship programs. To that extent, we are planning on partnering with two well-known organizations in the West Palm Beach community, Career Source Palm Beach County, as well as Palm Beach State College. It's currently estimated that approximately forty-eight permanent jobs, mostly in the residential and hotel management space, will be created by the development. The development team will also craft different ways for the organization, for both organizations, to participate in the project during the entire development and include their members and students. Career Source will be a direct line to local skilled individuals and will work with Cast to hire as many of those individuals possible. We will also work with Palm Beach State College to sponsor apprenticeship programs and instruct Cast to bring on those students to shadow different subcontractors and introduce them to different skilled labor careers. Hyperion will work with both Career Source and Palm Beach College on training and development for permanent jobs at the development, including hospitality, retail, food service, and property management. Further, Hyperion leadership, including myself, will volunteer to participate in a mentorship and leadership programs with local young entrepreneurs. Specifically, Hyperion is offering eight million dollars for the site. This purchase price is comprised of first initial lease payments of fifty thousand dollars per year for two years during the pre-development, then six-point-nine million to be paid during at project stabilization, with an additional million dollars contributed to the PGA and city efforts to improve the adjacent areas around the golf course, so that there is a seamless transition. The amount of tax revenue related to the construction sales depends on the size of the project. As a general guideline, you know, for projects that's a hundred million dollars, three to four million dollars could be generated in sales taxes, therefore, our project at eighty-one-eleven could generate approximately three-point-seven to four-point-nine million in tax revenue. And the annual real property taxes generated by the project will exceed one-point-five million dollars annually. Just taking a look at our total construction budget, about one-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-five million, we anticipate a construction loan of approximately sixty-five percent, leaving an equity commitment of forty-three million dollars for this project. And with that, I will open it up to questions.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation, and we will start the questioning with Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you for your presentation and for being with us here today. I appreciate the detail you went into regarding apprenticeship and job training and the tech incubator. Can you tell me, can you tell us a little bit about your experience in these areas?
So on the tech incubator, we're in the process of formulating that in another project that we have up north. One of our partners in that is also involved in West Palm Beach, and he will be a partner in this as well. They have-
Be closer to the mic, please.
Sorry. They have a business model, which, to this point, they've considered proprietary, but should we advance more into these discussions, we can be more specific and explicit about the details.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you for the presentation. I think this is a very ambitious project, possibly the most ambitious one that we've seen today. It is fantastic, but I, you know, I think what I'm looking for is not just a great partner in a project and a great developer, but also want to be realistic about how we're going to move forward with things. So I'm wondering, just hearing your previous answer to Commissioner Lambert, that some things are kind of still ebb and flow, I guess, and how it's all going to work, I'm wondering about the rest of the project. Should we be confident that this is a project that will move forward?
Yes, and we anticipated that, looking at our presentation against the others, we anticipated that the first question is going to be, wow, this seems like a lot of stuff, how are you going to pull this off? That's where we think our background and expertise comes into play, and the ability to, what we think is going to make this successful here in this location is actually making it a place that actually has enough to then become its own ecosystem where all these parts sustain each other. And in terms of the economic, you know, the ability to invest in this is, and capitalize this project is in place with our group, and we see no reason why we can't execute on this project. I will say some of the numbers that we put up, as far as the size of this project and the cost and everything else, is based on the presentation that was done a year ago. So I anticipate that those numbers will be a bit higher than we saw, but in any event, this is, this type of large-scale project is, it's sort of our core competence, and we were not shy about being able to pursue this.
Commissioner Warren.
Good afternoon. Just to further that question, as we look at how ambitious this proposal is, and it is a very nice proposal, can you tell me how you anticipate? You did just mention that some of the costs may be different than what you'd originally proposed. How do you plan to address some of those risk exposures that you may have that exist now?
Well, I think all developers are dealing with the same issues in the market right now, which is increasing in uncertainty in construction costs. And it's just a matter of being able to work closely with your contractors. It helps that we have, we now have a major project in West Palm Beach, working with a major contractor and with, you know, major institutions that people know that we have the ability to execute on what it is we're doing, and we think that that at least provides some level of assurance to contractors. And to the extent that there's any control that we can exert on them, but at the same time, the market has also improved. So for the market aspect of this, of this project, there also would be, the top line also should be able to improve to help accommodate some of the increase in costs.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation today. You've indicated a number of different uses on your project, office use, hotel use, residential, commercial. Just curious, did those uses come out of conversations with the community? And to that extent, what are the conversations you intend on having with the community going forward to get input for the project?
So we started out looking at this, understanding that there is a community there that has to be served, and a community that has to be encouraged. And at the same time, this is, this is a piece of real estate. And we look at what we can do with a piece of real estate, what's feasible, and then what you do with the community has to go hand in hand with that. There's a time and a place for that. And certainly, in terms of actually programming what goes into these retail spaces, how exactly we're going to target the incubator, how we're going to do those things, those are things that as we get closer in the process, should we advance, we would also advance those efforts as well, so that we can get direct feedback and not be guessing as to what they do, and also not necessarily to have, you know, we- to have, you know, we, I think when this process started, there were ten or eleven participants in this. When they did the citizens' review, out of those ten or eleven, we came in second in terms of our role program, so we were, we were pleased with that. And so, that, that was some feedback that we already had gotten from, from the community. And, you know, again, beyond that, it's, it's, it's an ongoing, interactive process, where should we be further down the road, so the community doesn't get approached by ten different groups all the time, saying, how about this, how about that, or, you know, all these people have this. When it's real and serious, that's when we sit down and we start really to engage with the leaders of the community and take their time to focus on our project, because we also understand that ours is, has a lot more involved than just two-hundred homes. It's, there's a lot more to it.
Thanks.
This area of the city is very diverse, with a significant Hispanic-Latinx population. How will you work to ensure that your project, even after construction, I know you're going to be offering jobs, et cetera, but after construction and during activation, that this project is welcoming and inviting to that community as well?
Well, we think for starters, but let me back up. We, our roots are in Miami, so we certainly understand how to, how to develop projects and locations and work in communities that have to address, A, being bilingual and basically address the different cultures, both Latin and Hispanic, and we completely, you know, as well as anyone, understand how to, how to do that. But on top of that, what's going to be good for the community is, is in fact, the mix of things that we're doing here, that everything from the ability to utilize the public park that we're creating and the access to the waterfront, the restaurants that we envision, all these things, the office space, this, we, this area will be something that the community will be able to access as, for the, for its public aspect as well as much as anybody else. So, it'll be an opportunity for people outside the community and inside the community in the same way.
Thank you. Mr. President, we'll start another round.
Thank you, Mayor. As my colleagues have stated, I think this is a very ambitious project. I do like the diversity of uses that you've come up with, and my initial thought was, wow, there's, there's a lot on this piece of property, and I was concerned with the public spaces and amenities. But I also see that, looking at this picture, that you seem to have one of the largest open boardwalks along the waterfront. I assume that that's going to be a public-use waterfront, and can you tell me how exactly you plan on activating that? I see here that you have kayaking. Is there anything else you intend on doing with that waterfront? And is it indeed a really open boardwalk that the public will have access to?
Yeah, as, as I just, yes, as I just stated, it will absolutely, and I understand the question, and it's absolutely for the community, apart from, it's also an amenity to the, to the residents, to the, and to the hotel, but that whole, that whole, we wanted to create this open space that becomes kind of a center for civic engagement. So, now the local community, they have their own spaces, and it's, it's a, you know, it's a vibrant local community, but now they have another, larger space that they can all access. And yes, that they will be able to canoeing, paddleboarding, you know, your typical water sports that people would do on a canal like this, and do you want to say something?
Yeah, and just on that point, we're going to be working with the property management firm to put together actual engagement activities. So, you know, I worked up in, up in New York with business improvement districts, where you work with both private and public places to do outdoor yoga for free, and we're going to, you know, probably have a website and put, put all those things together so that people can actually go and schedule time to, you know, do whatever they want outside.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask for clarification on an answer you gave to a previous question when you were talking about you hope that the site becomes self-sustaining. I just wanted to make sure I understood, is this to be built in phases?
No. No, this would be all built in, in one phase.
Okay, maybe you could elaborate then. I think it was to Commissioner Fox's question about, you know, how will you fund all of this, how, how will this come to fruition, and, and your statement said something about self-sustaining. Maybe I just misunderstood what you meant there.
So, what I meant by self-sustaining, when in that context, was that we've heard the word ambitious used a couple of times, and I think that that, and we accept that, and it's because of the, the mix of uses we have here. But why we think, why we believe and know it works is because in, in operation, all the different, these uses, all will have symbiotic relationships with each other, with the golf course, with the waterway, with the hotel, the tech, the incubator, some of the office space, and all these things drive, drive business opportunities. So, it's not so much about getting them built. To get them built, you actually need people who, who actually believe in those particular uses. And if you just go to one office person by themselves and say, would you like to put an office in this spot? Eh, you know, let me think about it. Or, and you could pick any different component and have, you know, engaged reaction, but by creating the sense of place and a, a community in this whole ecosystem, what I meant by, by interrelating to each other, is that now they see that they have a place where it will draw not only from businesses and activities that were in this, are in this space, but from the local community and beyond. Again, we envision that, we envision that this golf course, we're very excited about it. We think it's just a phenomenal thing. We think it's something that's going to draw not just locally, but-
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have to be consistent with the time.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right, the next round will be Kaufman and Falcone. Oh, thank you. Oh, I can download from here. All right, let me just keep it in case then. Oh, actually, I don't need that. I'm going to move yours to, oh, yes, definitely. I don't, it gets too big anyway.
What can we use the PowerPoint for this?
Yes. You want to plug it in for the...
Yeah.
All right, it should work. So, there's a clock, twenty-five minutes. The last ten, we will stop for question and answer, so make sure you keep your eye on the clock.
Let me just make sure this, yep, that works. We will create a partnership, a partnership that is focused on the residents, that will deliver the best community development for the city of West Palm Beach. Good afternoon, my name is Jeff Zalkin. I'm Vice President with Kaufman Lynn. On behalf of Kaufman Lynn and the Falcone Group, we are excited to give you the details about our community development that we are proposing for you. One thing that we're really, really have a lot of pride in is the fact that we were ranked first, both in the Citizen Review Committee and your staff. Not only that, you may not have seen, is we're also ranked first in the South End Neighborhood Association Board of Directors. Now, what's important to us, we think every one of those groups brings a different perspective that they look at, and yet, all three groups with their own sort of lens in front ranked us number one, and number two through the rest, all changed up. We think that's great value, because that shows we're hitting on what each one of those groups are providing. Over the next fifteen minutes, we're going to provide a deep dive in each one of these items. Let's start with the team qualifications. Both Kaufman Lynn and the Falcone Group were local companies, founded here in Palm Beach, based here in Palm Beach. What that means to you is we care about this community, we care about this project. It's not just another project to us. We're also pioneers in P3. We've done it locally, we've done it time and time again, and we know how to get it done. Some statistics, over seventeen thousand multifamily units in the last five years, over four million square feet of commercial space, and over two-hundred-and-eighty projects for public agencies. Those are important because we know how to get it done. Projects like Plantation Walk, a community development that took an old, rundown commercial place and made it a vibrant destination mixed-use development. Art Square Hollendale, where we took the local art and brought that to bear into that key part of that project. Promenade at Sunset Walk, a retail destination focused on local and small mom-and-pop businesses that drive the economy. And public-private partnership, none grander than Miami World Center, that is the second-largest urban redevelopment in all the nation, that we were the leaders on. Or the Rise Central, another public-private partnership of multifamily and retail. And we mentioned we were pioneers. After the state passed the legislation, we delivered the first public-private partnership right here in South Florida in this, in Miramar, so we know how to get it done. It's important to have that kind of experience, because with over two-hundred-and-eighty projects with public agencies, we know how to work with your staff, we know how to work with your departments, we know how to work with the government agencies, and we can make this actually happen. What do some of those officials say? Well, Tony over in Plantation, or Mayor Suarez in City of Miami, they said we're a leader in the real estate industry, focused on community-building spaces. Terrence over at City Rare Beach said we delivered on our promises involving the local community. And the Chief of Police in the Town of Jupiter said we communicated and involved all the stakeholders. Those are all things you need, the qualities you need, to make this a success. Now, the development team we have are a lot of local experts, and you're going to hear from them today, not just me, not just one or two people. And we bring intangibles as well, like Hector Diaz, to bring art to the project that's been involved in many city projects throughout and is a local to this community. We've heard you loud and clear, time and time again, small and local businesses matter, and we've got that, not only the plan in the future, we've got that baked into our team. You see here some of the key members of our team that are small and minority businesses that we brought to the table. And Ann, we're going to make a difference in the community, right?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Ann McNeil, President, Owner of MCO Construction, very excited to be a part of this team. We have already demonstrated, as you can see on this slide here, for Palm Beach County schools, we've exceeded the goal, and as you can see, we have an average of thirty-two percent participation on SBE and local firm participation. Next slide, please. We've also committed with the Minority Business Development Agency in an agreement to have their involvement to help support the small businesses in this community. Next slide. We're committed to inform, outreach, and have job fairs, and we are committed to exceed the workforce, the local workforce for the city of West Palm Beach. In addition to that, the MBE goals that are not set basically for the city, but we are currently working on a project that's the first P3 at the city of Riviera Beach, and we want to encourage the city that one of the best ways to include minority and small business participation is through a P3. So, our commitment is to exceed the twenty percent, which we're impacting on ourselves. And Angel will talk to us about public information. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Angel Gardner. I'm with the Valerian Group, and we are going to be leading the community engagement program, raising awareness, building enthusiasm, and providing ongoing public information for this project. We are going to have early, consistent, transparent outreach, working hand-in-hand with the city's communication team, who's already done an excellent job with their community engagement. So, here's what we're going to do. We're going to create a tailored communications plan, using the tools and techniques you see on the slide before you. We'll have interactive public workshops, social media campaigns, small group meetings, stunning visuals, including virtual reality videos. We believe also in being out there in the community. We will be forming partnerships with community groups, particularly the South End Neighborhood Association, because we want to make sure people understand that they are part of the process and that we want their voices to be heard. This is something we use on all of our projects, and we'll think of the, we know it will be effective for the city. Thank you.
Terrence.
Thanks, Angel. My name is Terrence Conley, and I am Principal in Charge of Design at BC Architects. So, when we were designing the concept for this project, we kept three goals in mind, to engage the community, keep it pedestrian-friendly, and promote a sense of community. So, I will go over three key components of the site. It will be the public amenities, the residential community, and the golf center guest experience. Starting with public amenities, we are proposing a vibrant shop front along Dixie Highway with local and small businesses. And on the corner, on the southeast corner, we're proposing a Civic Plaza and Welcome Monument. This will be the cornerstone of the project. The Civic Plaza will be similar in scale to the Rosemary Square in downtown, and the Welcome Monument will be a landmark for those entering the city from the south. Just steps away from that Civic Plaza is the second amenity, which is the activated C-51 canal. This will be a multi-tiered waterfront promenade with terraces overlooking the water, the walkway and docks below. As you can see, this stretches the entire length of the, of the southern edge of the site, and it will feature many amenities such as the courtyard for events and festivals, two lunch points for kayakers and paddleboarders, two retail venues, a cafe and a fitness club and a covered terrace. The second component of the project is the residential community, and here we are proposing one-hundred-and-fifty high-quality apartment units, ranging from studio to three-bedroom. And on the ground floor, there will be private terraces, enlarged private terraces, and a two-story pasero to pass through to the waterfront promenade. There will also be a sky lounge for views of the surrounding area. Now, because of the commitment and the investment that the city has made into the golf, golf park next door, we are proposing several spaces that will take advantage of that and cater specifically to tourists and golf enthusiasts. For example, there will be a twenty rentals, short-term rentals, and also, as you can see on the slide, there will be a golf village located right adjacent to the golf park, will feature five, or ten colleges with twenty vacation rentals, a clubhouse, which will also function as a community center, and a putting green in the middle. There will be a space for golf cart parking and a large, wide, possession-friendly golf cart sidewalk, allowing players to go back and forth to the golf park. We're also committed to partnering with the PGA and PGA Junior League to support their efforts at the golf park. So, as you can see from these components that we have for this project, they all work together to create a dynamic, walkable community development, and we look forward to working with the city to continue refining this project and building something great for the South End Neighborhood.
Thank you, Terrence. Hello, everyone. My name is Alfonso Costa Jr., and I serve as Executive Vice President of the Falco Group. Let's please go into the details of the financial and development components of the development. We really think it's important to synergize not only with the West Palm Golf Park adjacent to the site, and we have been in communication with both the PGA and their development team and have actually walked the site with them, we also think it's equally important to be synergistic with the northern-bound Palm Coast Club. We have actually been in close contact with and have agreed upon terms with the ownership group, the Micha family, led by Alberto Micha. And again, we think that's really important in terms of coordination and collaboration with what happens on the eighty-one-eleven South Dixie site. In terms of our purchase price, we have put forth the highest amount of nine-point-five million dollars, and we think it's especially important to acknowledge that this has been the highest price from the start, because we have always valued and seen the value in what you all are trying to do at the city of West Palm Beach. So, again, we think it's the best value, but it's also the best impact, and I think that was manifested by the different review committee hearings consistently ranking us number one. Also, we believe it is the lowest risk amongst all the different proposers. As you can see here, our source of funds, the KL Falcone Group Team utilizes our own discretionary capital for the equity portions of the development. We think it's also really important to acknowledge that the KL Falcone Group Team is not, I repeat, we are not seeking money or resources from the city or city organizations for the project or its respective amenities. Continuing on the theme of lowest risk, you can see here a group of different financial references, of strong financial-related developments, contacts, and relationships we have developed over the years that have allowed us to successfully deliver time and time again. In terms of economic benefits, you can see here that we project that our first-year occupancy will yield in excess of two million dollars in terms of tax revenue. In terms of a proposed timeline, you will see here that we will be- In terms of a proposed timeline, you will see here that we will be breaking ground should the negotiations carry out the way that we would foresee, breaking ground in the fall of '22, and having a grand opening or ribbon-cutting by the end of 2023. Now, some of you may be wondering, isn't that an aggressive timeline? But please be rest assured that we have time and time again delivered under such circumstances, and we understand the importance of what you all are trying to do and the urgency related to it. Now, in terms of public benefits, we started out talking about the community, now let's bring it back to it. We really do believe that complementing and activating all along the borders of the site is of utmost importance, as well as focusing on the enhancement of the PGA investment that the city is partaking in at the West Palm Golf Park. Also, activating the public park and waterway uses is of utmost importance, and we have Hector Diaz here, which I think is going to, he's going to do a phenomenal job in terms of activating the waterway, whether it's street murals or wall murals, to really complement the site. I'd also be remiss not to acknowledge that I have a personal and professional commitment to workforce housing. Having served as the Deputy Chief of Staff at the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, I know how important it is to respective communities to make sure that there is, in fact, quality, affordable, attainable housing for all. And so, if you actually look into our proposal on page 93 within our purchase terms, you will see that we are open to a workforce housing set aside. Also, I want to stress the sustainability involved with our project. Both health and wellness will be integrated through two primary forms of certification standards being LEED and FITWELL. In terms of job creation, more than 100 permanent jobs through both the commercial and residential components, and in excess of 750 jobs from the development and construction process. And now, I will introduce Mike Kaufman, the Founder and CEO of Kaufman-Lynn.
Thank you. And good afternoon. It is a pleasure to be here today speaking with you, on behalf of the 220 employee owners of Kaufman-Lynn Construction, our development partners Falcone Group, our architects, MCO Construction, and the entire team that will be required to bring this project to successful conclusion. We truly thank you for having us in today. Projects like this project are special endeavors. They have direct impact into our community in so many levels, financially, culturally, that sense of place that we're striving to achieve with this. It gives construction companies and development companies a higher purpose, and we are here to commit to that higher purpose. We want to provide you that very important three-legged stool that will provide the results that will outpace the community's expectations and hopefully the city's expectations as well. We start with the team. We feel confident that this...
I'm sorry, you may start with the team, but I have to stop you there. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Now it's time to go into...
We're ready for your questions.
Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioner Fox, you want to start off, please?
Thank you so much for the presentation, and the question I was going to ask about was the workforce housing because I hadn't seen it anywhere in the proposal, so I appreciate you pointing us to page 93. But when I'm there, it says, "A component of workforce housing is contemplated as part of the residential community." I know that you have offered less units because there are the golf rental suites and things like that, so I understand there's maybe less units in this project than some of the others, but I don't want to assume what that means, that you're contemplating workforce housing. Can you just clarify a little bit?
Absolutely, Commissioner Fox, and thank you for that question. And if you actually look at page 69 of our proposal, you will see the various underwriting that we've put forth as it relates to the projected rents for the residential units. And if you actually look across the unit types, whether it be studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, or three bedrooms, and you look at the current 2021 Florida income limits and the associated rents that would be limited to households making either 100% of AMI, which we have heard publicly is a goal in terms of the city setting as a cap for workforce housing, or the current stipulated percentage, that being 120% of AMI, you will see across all of the projected rents that we've put forth on page 69 as being about approximately 20% across those unit counts, being underneath the current workforce housing threshold, and if it were to be limited to 100% in the 10% to 15% mark. But again, that's something that we would be looking forward to continuing discussing with the City Commission, should we be lucky enough and fortunate enough to continue.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you for the great presentation. Can you tell me if the community was involved in any aspect of your proposal, or if there was engagement?
Yeah, Commissioner Warren, thank you for your question. And so, prior to the ITN being formally issued, we did have initial conversations with the South End Neighborhood Association, and I think that does reflect itself in the various rankings that we received. If you look at the city staff rankings, but then also as it relates to the Citizen Review Committee rankings, receiving number one in both, and then the South End Neighborhood Association Board of Directors also ranking us number one, again, we think is reflection of the not only initial feedback that we received from local community groups, but we know that Angel, who's here with us from the Valerian Group and spoke earlier, she and her team will also be doing a formidable job throughout the development process to continuing that ongoing dialogue.
Commissioner Chauvin?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. As it pertains to looking at your MWBE program, I'd like to hear a little bit more details on how you intend on engaging going forward and what kind of programs will we put forward to further engage the community.
Thank you so very much for the question. We have current, we currently are demonstrating, as a licensed general contractor, we're involved with the contractor Kaufman-Lynn from the pre-construction, and that's what allows us to get the community involvement, but also in a position to break down the packages at a level of which the community can respond as MBE contractors, similarly to what we did for the city of West Palm Beach on that project and what we're doing right now at the city of Riviera Beach.
Thank you. The area in which this project will be located, it's the south end of our city, which is extremely diverse, with a significant Hispanic Latinx community. So in addition to obviously hopefully getting them involved with working on the project itself, I want to know what your thoughts are about ensuring that that demographic feels that this project, even after completion, is welcoming and inviting to them.
So I just wanted to point out that, you know, we will be having a bilingual staff working on this project. In addition to that, any materials that we put out there will be bilingual as well. And we will be out there in the community, talking to them, and making sure we understand where they're coming from, making sure that they're part of, they understand they're part of the process, and we want to get their input on what they think this development should be. So we'll definitely be out there, talking to them and working with that particular community, for sure.
Anybody else want to weigh in on that?
Yeah. One thing I'd like to add is our commitment to creating that sense of place. This is a very diverse community. We are engaged with the community. We know its makeup. We're very proud to be working on a project that will have such a great positive impact. We have to pay very special attention to their wants and needs. And we do feel like we've made, had good penetration into understanding what they are initially, but it will take a lot of collaboration from here going forward, if we're fortunate enough to go forward with you, with our community stakeholders, to make sure that we're incorporating what will create that sense of place and the community that they want to arrive at and move towards for the unique events that will happen in the common public spaces of the community. We're looking forward to that in a great way, and also bringing our art in public places with our true community artists that should speak directly to our diverse community.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, thank you, Mike, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your question regarding the diversity of the neighborhood. And going back to, as it relates to the Citizen Review rankings, if you look specifically at the breakdown of how we were perceived and judged amongst not only the residents across the five districts of the city of West Palm Beach, but also the at-large reviewers, those being a South End resident and a South End business, they both ranked us number one, which again, we think speaks to the validity, the realistic nature of, and the speaking to the community of our willingness to not only listen, but understand that it's an ongoing dialogue, and this proposal's first draft is an exciting one for us.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this time, Mayor.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I can't remember who mentioned it, but somebody called this location or this project something very special. We certainly believe that as well. I'd like to hear a little bit more about why you all think that this project is specifically special, and I'd love for your answer to talk a little bit about the sense of place-making here for the residents and visitors.
Absolutely. Well, first, thank you, Commissioner Lambert, for your question and for your comments. We think that this being the southernmost entry point to the city speaks volumes in terms of visitors and homeowners and renters alike, whoever is actually entering the city as its first impression coming from the south. And so, we understand that it's not only the four corners of this site that matters in terms of the built environment, but also how you engage those who visit it. So whether it's the 20,000-square-foot public promenade, of which we look forward to engaging with you all on the Art in Public Places program for the Welcoming Monument sign and what that actually ends up looking like, to the activation along the C-51 canal and all of the various public uses that are projected and proposed to be used. And then also the adjacency and synergy with the West Palm Golf Park. It really is a new urbanism-type concept, of which we have demonstrated time and time again, not only at Miami World Center, but at Plantation Walk in close proximity. In terms of the sense of place-making, I'll defer to Mr. Kaufman.
Well, it's an interesting project and a special project because we've got to, in a collaborative way, combine the impact of this being the gateway, the southern gateway to the city. It's got to have good impact. It's got to be welcoming, it's got to really send a progressive message to our visitors, and yet, we need to create that place of home for our local residents. It's going to be, it's going to be an interesting challenge, and the way we'll achieve and meet and exceed the goals is through that collaboration. We will engage all of the appropriate communication methodology in concert with the city, of course, and get that input and really put it down, get it designed properly, and then it comes down to execution. We've got to bring the right level of superior quality to really ensure that our residents believe that this is the finest place that they could have gotten, and we're committed to that. We've done it time and time again with Encore. We're really proud of that relationship, and it goes back over 40 years.
Yeah, and just to clarify, when Mr. Kaufman says Encore, that is in fact one of our discretionary private equity funds within the Falcone Group, so just for, in case that was a question that was going to come from that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Noone. Okay, that's it. Miss read the clock. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Josephine?
You need to keep that on?
I think I got your thumb dry. Yes, I think I got you. All right, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. We will take 10 minutes break. We will be back at 2:00. The scheduled time is 2:25.
All right, before we do that, you had mentioned in the beginning of this section that if commissioners had questions for any of the developers, they didn't get a chance to ask during the presentation.
Right. So once we come back from, then we will make sure everyone's around, and then...
I just wanted to get a sense as to whether there were any such questions. Are there some questions that any of you have that you didn't get answered during the presentation? Everybody all right? Okay, so what time you want us back?
2:25.
2:25?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.